Welcome to the City Club of Eugene's January 22nd, 2021 program. Getting to know new Eugene city councilors Randy Groves and Matt Keating. This is the 17th program of our 2020-2021 programming year. My name is Scott Coltrane and I'm the City Club President. Support for the City Club is provided by our members and sponsors. You can become a member of the City Club at our website, cityclubofeugene.org. Our programs are always available on our YouTube channel and on our Facebook page and our rebroadcast on Public Radio Station KLCC 89.7 on Mondays at 7:00 PM. We have both business and in-kind sponsors, including our diamond sponsors, Kaiser Permanente, University of Oregon, Peace Health and Lane Community College. And we receive generous support from the City of Eugene and from Lane County. Today's program. Newly elected Eugene city councilors Randy Groves and Matt Keating have joined the eight-member City Council at a challenging time for the city and for the nation. Keating is replacing Betty Taylor, the longest-serving city councillor who retired after representing South Eugene Ward 2 for 24 years. Groves is giving up retirement as Eugene Springfield Fire Chief to represent Ward 8 in West Eugene, a position formerly held by Chris Pryor, who served for many years on the council. These dynamic community leaders will discuss the issues and initiatives they bring to the table as the newest members of the Eugene City Council. Our new City Club forum format will include a robust question-and-answer period with City Club members via Zoom. I would like to thank Sandra Bishop for coordinating today's program. Each of our guests will begin with a brief opening statement.
Hello, my name is Sandra Bishop. I'm the coordinator of today's program, getting to know our new Eugene city councilors. It's a pleasure to introduce these two speakers today. We have with us newly-elected city councilors Randy Grove and City Councillor Matt Keating. So it takes a lot of courage to run for and serve in elected office these days. With the country on high alert amidst political turmoil, racial tensions, unnatural natural disasters, it's really heartening to see people of the quality of Matt and Randy stepping forward to serve here locally. And there's certainly no lack of courage amongst these two and no lack of accomplishments. Randy's coming to us out of a career at this city in firefighting in the Eugene Springfield Fire Department, 10 years of which he's out of about 30 years, I think, right now. And 10 of those years, he served as chief of the department and helped to merge those two departments, which was no simple matter with multiple unions and a lot of challenges. And then Matt, as young as he may be, has had a lot of experience. He recently has been serving as a member of the Lane Community College Board. In this position, Matt has been instrumental in managing a budget for this critical community college in such a way that expansion of programs and rebuilding infrastructure has gone forward for this thriving community college. So we're glad to have both of them today. And they'll each make a presentation seven to 10 minutes long and then we'll open it for questions. And then there'll be a couple of minutes for each of the speakers to have a little wrap-up at the end. So I'd like to first introduce, I was gonna say Senator Matt, you haven't gotten there yet. Like to introduce Eugene City Councillor Matt Keating. And then he will turn it over to Councillor Grove. So Matt, take it away.
Thank you, Sandra, for that warm introduction. Thank you to City Club members for allowing the space for Councillor Groves and I to communicate today our priorities. And thank you to everyone listening on KLCC 89.7. I'm glad you mentioned Lane Community College, Sandra. I'm very proud of my two terms of service on the Lane Community College Board, advocating for maintaining and expanding programs and services to the Lane County service area, to our students and protecting programs, and promoting and providing living wage jobs, and being a consummate advocate for vital student loan reform and making college more affordable. So I'm incredibly proud of my service at Lane Community College, but it now is the time to step up at this critical moment in history. And I want to thank the voters, not only constituents here in Ward 2, but across the county, who supported the Lane Community College bond this last May. In the midst of a pandemic, taxpayers stepped up and said, "Yes, we believe in the services the Lane Community College is providing." The challenges in front of us at a municipal level are not small. The challenges in front of us at a state and regional and national level are not minute. But these challenges require far more than status quo solutions. And now is the time, Sandra, to be bold. Now is the time to roll up our sleeves and tackle climate, tackle, find ways to provide and promote jobs in the clean energy sector and embrace an abatement to human-caused climate conditions we're realizing across our globe and right here in Eugene. Now is the time to roll up our sleeves and lean into affordable housing solutions and promote housing affordability throughout our community. Now is the time to stand with our county and our statewide partners for vital mental health services and solutions to our most vulnerable of community members. We cannot do these, we cannot meet these challenges alone. It takes the village and I welcome the input. You know, it's almost like we have a budget committee by, a budget committee, a public budget committee is what I'm trying to say. Our first budget committee meeting this year is February 7th, but we have an open and transparent process in which we invite the public to illustrate a priority of services. And Councillor Groves and I, I don't want to speak for you, Randy, but we got to know each other very well on the campaign trail. You made this point before we flipped the switch and went live tonight. And I want to say that, I want to echo your words, Randy, how great it's been to get to know you and the values that you and I share and how well we can partner with our colleagues on council and with the mayor to move forward with this bold agenda that I've laid out. We didn't run when we filed to serve more than a year ago and step up in the role that Chris Pryor and Betty Taylor respectively occupied before us. We never thought we would be doing this at the height of a global pandemic. Here we are. And we are 38th out of 50 in the nation in regards to vaccinations, whether it's communication or supply issue. We can do better and we can and should be doing better to promote the efficacy of vaccinations, to support the efficacy of wearing masks and not spreading diseases, and still supporting and finding ways to lift up our responsible small businesses throughout our community. I look forward to a robust dialogue this afternoon, considering this is a City Club event on Friday. And again, welcome and thank you to the listeners on KLCC. I'm now going to pass it to my partner, Councillor Randy Groves. I look forward to a spirited conversation. And with so many years on serving as our police chief, I look forward to learning a great deal alongside you as a city councillor. Councillor Randy Groves.
Well, thank you, Councillor Keating. I was actually the fire chief, but.
I'm sorry.
Police, that's okay.
My apologies, of course you're the fire chief.
It's, thank you. I too have enjoyed getting to know Councillor Keating through this process. And the more we speak, the less I think there is that we disagree on. There's so much that I'm looking forward to partnering with. But I want to thank the City Club and Sandra Bishop for moderating this event today. I want to thank the public for tuning in. I want to thank councillors Chris Pryor and Betty Taylor for your many years of service. And a special thank you to Chris and Rosie Pryor, who helped me immensely during this process. Although I have a lot of experience working in government, I have, I had zero experience when I started as a candidate trying to run a campaign. So I can't thank them enough, as well as my talented staff, with Sean Shivers as my campaign manager. A little bit about myself, I was, I'm a native Oregonian. I was born and raised in Portland by two parents who grew up during the Great Depression. They taught me the, how to be frugal, how to manage money and the importance of not spending more than you're taking in and helped me to become a good fiscal manager, which stuck with me later in my life when I became an administrator of our fire department. I worked, boy, counting my time, I started in Corvallis as a firefighter in 1979. I had 37 years, just short of 37 years of service, counting my Corvallis time and over 36 years here in Eugene, with the last six years concurrently Eugene Springfield, following the merger. I worked my way up from recruit firefighter to chief of department and then the chief of the merged department, working with Dennis Murphy, chief of Springfield to make that happen and a very good partnership with our unions. But before that, I actually joined my first union when I was 16 years old, working in a grocery store in Portland. I've been a union member for a good part of my life. In addition to working my way up through the ranks in the fire department, I was vice president of the International Association of Firefighters, Local 851. I believe in unions and represented workforces, but I also believe in management. And I've been asked, "How can you support both?" And it's very simple for me. Business and industry needs labor to bring their goods and services to market, or in the case of a fire department, to get the work done. And labor needs management and leadership in business in order to produce a paycheck and benefits package. So I like to think before we even get started, we have more in common than we have dissimilar. And the best work I've seen is where we can collaborate together. And that was the way we ran our fire department. We worked in collaboration. We worked to save money. We worked to be more efficient. That was the genesis of the merger, to improve service efficiency and service effectiveness. And we did both. We've saved, over the years, millions of dollars and provided better service at the same time. Something I'm very proud of and I'm proud of our people for working together to make that work. I'm proud of the two cities for taking a risk and allowing us to do that. So that's very important to me. Speaking more contemporary, contemporarily about the issues that are facing us. I started my campaign talking about the economy and jobs. You know, how do we get more living wage jobs in Eugene? I talked a lot about affordable housing and the lack thereof in our community with only a 2.9% rental vacancy rate, which is less than half the national average. I talked about how we can bring in good-paying jobs for our community while still being conscious about our climate and the changing conditions we were seeing. In my campaign platform, I proposed a green enterprise zone or area where we could promote green technology and not only take advantage of economic opportunities out there with clean technology, but also help the climate issue. And to be a leader, not only in our practices, but also in how we provide for our community. At the same time, I think it's also important that we, anything we do, we take in balance with our other needs. I think we're past the point of looking at issues and silos that we need to be working together and looking at how different issues connect and different initiatives connect. If you have 10 pounds of energy to put towards a problem, it's always better spent towards the intersection between more than one problem. It gets us further faster with less energy. So those are things I will be looking for. Other things that I talked about a lot on our campaign were youth. Youth is very important to me. And I'm very concerned right now with the effects of the pandemic and the isolation our students are going through. I'm very concerned with our youth that are on the edge. You know, programs like 15th Night that come in to help our youth that are in unstable housing, that whose future is not as sure as those who raised in a home of privilege. And we need to be taking all this into consideration. I'm concerned with the unhoused and how we can help them. But at the same time, I'm also concerned with how we do that so that it doesn't adversely impact our economy and things that we need that actually help solve the problem. So those are things I will be looking forward to and opportunities I will be looking forward to, how we can connect and keep them going. I just want to give a shout-out to Councillor Keating as well. I really have appreciated the relationship that I believe we've built during the campaign. And I find there's so much that we absolutely agree on. And I've always found we can get things further, move things further faster if we start with our commonalities and work out from there. By the time we get to things we disagree on, they just become issues. And so that's, that's kind of a brief introduction. I certainly appreciate the opportunity to be here with Matt today. And I look forward to a robust discussion. So thank you, Sandra, take it away.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Councillor Matt Keating and Councillor Randy Groves. We're going to move into the question-and-answer period now. Hello, this is Sandra Bishop, coordinator for the City Club program today with our two newest Eugene city councilors, City Council Eugene City Councillor Randy Groves and Eugene City Councillor Matt Keating. And we're going to move into the question-and-answer period. I'm going to start off with a first question. And this has to do with budgeting. Eugene, like many other cities, is experiencing challenges with budgeting. You have both been, I should say, challenges with paying for services through the budget. You've both served on the Eugene Budget Committee. And one of the things that Eugene does is carve-outs, where certain services are set aside and paid for through levies or bonds. And then you've got general fund and other budgets. So the question is, are you supportive of these kind of carve-outs? And are you likely to use more carve-outs going into the future? So if you could, and you're certainly welcome, both of you, to talk a little bit more about your budgeting philosophy. So I'm gonna have Councillor Keating go first.
Thank you, Sandra. Just point of clarification, I've served on the Budget Committee in my role as a Lane Community College Board Member, but I have not served on the Budget Committee for the City of Eugene. Councillor Grove has served as a.
Thank you for clarifying that, that was.
No worries, but I'm happy to talk about my, I'm talking about the budget, which is a, whether it's a municipality, whether it's a community college, whether it's a state and federal government, budgets are value statements. And in the best of all possible worlds, general fund dollars would be robust enough to cover all vital services. And clearly, we have a revenue problem. That's one of the reasons why the library levy was in front of us in the first place and then ultimately up for renewals. There were vital services that the library provides. And thank you to the 76% of Eugene voters who stood with myself and Councillor Groves and Mayor Piercy and City Club members and a plethora of community members who came out and said, "Yes, yes, we need to continue supporting our library services and promoting youth literacy and promoting the technology that the library provides to help those most vulnerable in our community get connected to employers, especially in this time of unrest and growing unemployment and underemployment." The tax imbalance I alluded to is a two-legged stool in the state. We are a property tax and an income tax state. And we need to have real, honest conversations about how we drive revenue to help pay for our vital services. So as mentioned, in the best of all possible worlds, general fund dollars would be robust enough to cover the services that we so desperately need to pay for here in this community.
Thank you. Councillor Grove.
Thank you, Sandra. And in the interest of time, I agree with pretty much everything Councillor Keating said. So I'm not going to repeat that. At the same time, I think we have a system in place right now that basically the level of ability to grow and to meet the needs of a community that's been facing a lot of challenges. We have a very difficult tax station system in Oregon. And I think some of that is, Councillor Keating identified, is tied back to the two-legged stool of funding that we have. With that said, I do support alternative means of raising revenue as long as, you know, we include the voters in that. I think it's important that people have the opportunity to weigh in and be able to speak for what they feel is important, just as a system of checks and balances. I also think that, you know, it's incumbent upon us to do everything we can to make our services as efficient as possible. You know, that was kind of at the base when we started looking at, "How can we be more efficient and effective with our fire department?" And the fact that we had a narrow ribbon of concrete that separated Eugene and Springfield, looking for an alternative service delivery system. I believe that we need to be pushing the envelope on innovation. We need to look at how we can do things better differently. I think there's a lot of spirit on that in the city organization. But we need to encourage that. We need to get people so that they are thinking in unconventional ways of how we can continue the great service that I feel we provide the public without, you know, ramping up the costs. So I am all for looking at those means that we can do that. But I also, again, being raised by parents from the Great Depression, I tend to be frugal by nature and I'm constantly looking for ways of making things more efficient.
All right, thank you very much. And we have a couple people lined up for questions here. The first questioner, first person is John Belcher has a question. So John, go ahead and make sure you're unmuted.
Thank you, Sandra. John Belcher, City Club member. Thanks for your service. I know you're going to do great jobs based on what you've done before. So glad you're on the council. The previous question was about the budget. And you guys approached it from the way of finding more money for the budget so that we wouldn't have to necessarily cut services. But I'm going to ask you about the other side of the coin. Assuming that you can't bring revenue to cover all the needs of the current city budget, what are the areas that you would consider for cuts? I know that's not an easy question, but you're going to get it sooner or later. So thank you.
Thank you, John. Go ahead, Councillor Grove.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was, that was the plan. I apologize for that. Yes, that's a, that's a great question. And actually, I did talk about a way of reducing our financial footprint, our cost footprint. And we did that with merging the Eugene and Springfield Fire Departments. And we tried to do that as a department or two departments coming together. I think we need to always be looking for efficiencies and how we can trim the budget. Because I also recognize the public's, the public has limits on what they can afford to pay. It also makes us less competitive for trying to attract clean industry and businesses to locate here that will enrich our community. So we need to have that in mind when we go forward. Before we reduce any services, I'm always going to want to look at, "How can we improve efficiencies? What's, how do we, how do we distill down what we have so that we're focusing on that end-service-delivery piece?" And then also looking at how services complement each other. And sometimes, by the way, we do and deliver services, we can not only become more efficient, but we can actually even improve the quality of service. And I'll go back to the fire merger, I think, as a good example of really trying to challenge the status quo and look at a different way of doing the work. It also involves, I think, looking at what we can do in the way of different things that we bring into the portfolio that raise revenue, while still being cognizant of not stepping on private businesses who can make money that way. But when it comes down to actual service reductions, which to me is always the last step we should look at, then I think we start having a waiting process where, and I'm talking about, you know, pounds wait. We can wait the process to see what services are most essential to delivering safety and supporting our public. You know, oftentimes we'll talk about public safety and people instantly think police and fire. And I think public safety, public health goes well beyond police and fire. It's our, it's our streets. It's our sewage treatment system. It's clean water. It's, it's how we light things so that there's not just safety, but there's also the perception of safety. So I think as we go down this path, we're going to have to get more creative. We're going to have to get, push the envelope a little bit. I think we're up to the challenge. I, coming from city staff myself, we have so much talent in our organizations. It's sometimes I think we need to cut people loose to innovate. And I'm hoping innovation will maybe not carry us all the way, but it will get us as far as we can before we actually start trimming services. Thank you.
You know, our personnel, our parks, our public safety, fire, ambulance, police, cahoots. The services the city provides are critical and fundamental to the functionality of our community. I would be remiss and it would be far, it would be inappropriate to jump in and do the work of the Budget Committee that's been doing the work. And I look forward to robust dialogue starting February 7th. Here's the plug, it is a community-engaging, it's a community process. Come and speak to us. John, let us know what your priorities are and where your thoughts are as to how to best balance the budget. But I'm far more interested in finding alternative and creative ways to keep that stool balanced, that I alluded to earlier, that two-legged stool, to find that third leg, to keep that balance and to tackle the issues that are in front of us creatively and boldly and collaboratively. February 7th, go to the City of Eugene's website and participate in our public process. It's the first of our 2021 budget cycle meetings.
This is Sandra Bishop, the coordinator for today's program. We're going to go on with a few more questions for City Councillor Randy Groves and City Councillor Matt Keating. And I'm going to go to Mary Leighton for a question. Mary, go ahead.
I have a question from a non-member. Do you agree with your colleague, Councillor Mike Clark, that Black Lives Matter activists and the DC insurrectionists are equally violent and extremist? Why or why not?
Thank you. You know, first of all, let me just say, I'm against violence of any kind in any protest. I'm against property damage. But with that said, I cannot connect the two together from the Black Lives Matter movement protests and the DC protests. The protests that we witnessed in Washington DC was an attempt to take over our government. It was a level of insurrection and, you know, I condemn that in the strongest terms. That has nothing to do with peaceful continuation of our government and the transition of power that's going to be happening tomorrow. And I think it's important as elected leaders that we stand up and we call it out for what it is. it is. And I I'm proud that we are going to be addressing this issue in council meetings this week to to make a statement. There are times that it's very vitally important in our community that we stand up and be heard and we stand up and and take a stand on things that are wrong in our society. And this is certainly one of those. Somebody who's worked the street for many years, I I've been in the middle of protests before and I recognize that it can be, they can be scary and they can be dangerous. But to me, what happened in D C is a whole new level that we just can't tolerate in this country.
I concur. It's abhorrent and the assault on our democracy is sickening and the false equivalency is uncalled for and I'm offended by it. And by the time this airs, I do want to say that council would have had the opportunity to stand united to condemn white supremacy and white nationalism and hatred and the vitriol that that led to the misinformation that led to the siege, to the violent insurrection that has now cost six lives. And to 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 for any any community member to make that false equivalency is 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 out of bounds and uncalled for. But I want to create the space for the fact that by the time when this is, when this broadcast is being recorded and when it will air, I suspect that our colleague and our colleagues will stand united to strongly condemn hate, not just at our nation's capital and our state capital, but right here in the streets of Eugene to echo Chief Skinner's words, Proud Boys and violent white nationalist extremists are not welcome here.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And also understand that this is not, that we don't have the counselor here speaking these words and someone asking a question. So, you know, there's always, there's always room for for a little, a little play in in how things are stated one way or another. But really appreciate the gravity with which you are both taking these kind of situations because what's happening at the national level is also happening locally. And it's, it just, as I said in the introduction, it takes a lot of courage to be a leader on the council these days. So thank you both. With that, I'm going to go to a question from Joel Corin. Joel, go ahead.
Councilman Graves, Councilor Graves, you spoke glowingly about the merger of the two fire departments and the success that that has been. Are there any other areas of city services that you believe would be subject to possible merger that would lead to efficiencies? For instance, Police Department, Public Works, anything else?
I think there are areas in our community that would be worthwhile looking at. In fact, when I showed the map of Eugene and Springfield to some of my fire chief colleagues around the country, they thought it was one community. They they couldn't tell the difference. You know, fire is, I love how simplistic our mission is. If it's burning, we put it out. If you're bleeding, we stop the the flow. I mean, we, it's, it's very apolitical. I do believe there are areas in our community, especially sitting on the Springfield Executive Management Team, where the two cities have different philosophies and different ideologies and how they see things. So I don't think it would work in every situation. I'm not sure it would work in policing. I do not think it would work in land use planning. Street maintenance, again, it's apolitical. And if you can agree on a standard, I think there's possibly some room for efficiencies there as well. You can have shared services without losing your identity as a community. And I know that the the identities in both communities are incredibly important to the each city and their residents. So I would I would be happy to entertain and look at, are there more efficiencies and improvements in effectiveness that we can gain by by looking at a shared service? I know it works in fire.
Thank you. Counselor Keating, do you have any answer to that question?
Oh, this is, this is Counselor Groves Baileywick. So I I turn to the chief for his expertise in in this regard. Yeah, we'll say though, that that our unhoused population is addressing the the critical issues of 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 finding folks, emergency shelter and transitionary shelter and connections with employment and full wraparound services. That's that that's something that shouldn't just fall into the to to our municipal bucket. That's a collaboration and a partnership with our county. And I would love to explore how that is a holistic partnership with with municipalities next door and continue to 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 grow the partnership with with our our state partners. So again, though, the Counselor Groves has experience in emerging departments. That is certainly his area of expertise. And I appreciate the question and I hope you don't mind me taking it into the the critical issue of addressing our unhoused pop population.
No, thank you.
Could I just add, I I think it is appropriate to look at what Counselor Keating is suggesting. Are there opportunities to, I I know we're doing some great work with the county, but are there opportunities beyond that where we can be more effective in our service delivery system? And, you know, I don't, I don't think there should be any stone unturned, especially with the tight dollars. And, you know, we're going to have some real challenges coming out of the pandemic and the post COVID-19 hangover that we're going to have with our economy. So, you know, the the more we can find ways to work together and develop partnerships. And that is one thing I really hope to bring to the table is my relationships with Springfield, my relationships with the county. These are important. I mean, we're, we're in this together. And so it just only makes sense that we look at some of our solutions together.
Could I say something to this?
Certainly. Go ahead.
So my comment would be to you guys that you have a new administration coming in that has an interest in a lot of the same areas that you're bringing up. And usually when an administration has interest in something, money follows.
You're talking about federal?
Yes. So I'm just saying, I think there will be big opportunities if you keep your eye on what they're interested in at the federal level that you can take a piece of to do this kind of work that you're pointing out to everybody.
Mayor Pearson, you're so right. Whether it's community policing, the Counselor, Counselor Evans is involved in the national level under the Biden administration's plan to to lean into community solutions for not a one size fits all. The fact that Congressman DeFazio, Chairman of the Transportation Committee, now has a real opportunity in the Biden Harris administration to ensure that vital transportation dollars go to help rebuild our crumbling infrastructure and and help grow our robust investment in alternative transportation and LTD in particular. Senator Wyden is is Chairman of the Senate Finance Committee. And these are, these are opportune times for our municipality, which is essentially, as you know, and I, we are a lab for democracy. So let's find out how how well things work right here in Eugene and replicate those. And as as we've, you've done so well in the clean energy sector, let's, 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 let's start telling our story. Cahoots, let's start, let's start embracing, expanding and and sharing and replicating those successes.
And I I couldn't agree more with what she said, Mayor. The Kitty, I'm sorry. The the whole moving into the right lane, I mean, I always tried to do that as the fire chief. And I know we brought in millions of dollars into our community in grants by positioning ourselves ahead of the dollars being released because you can see the way the wind is blowing and get ourselves in the right lane. This is one of the things I'm hoping to capitalize on with some of the the concepts I floated out during the campaign about developing a green energy tech innovation zone and being able to capitalize on the money that's going to come out of that. Let's, let's bring jobs to our community, especially manufacturing jobs that pay living wage salaries while at the same time working to solve our our energy problem and our climate change. And I think by harnessing things like that, we're going to be so much further ahead of the game. And that's how we're really going to have an effect. Eugene by itself, you know, and the climate challenges isn't even a rounding error. It's, it's about, it's about us getting together and being influencers.
Thank you. And I, and we all presume that when you say, Counselor Groves, getting into the right lane, you mean the correct lane.
Well, sometimes that is the right lane. Yes, absolutely. Let's get in the the correct lane. Yes.
I'm a middle path practitioner myself. So I'm going to, I'm going to fit a question in here that it's a good segue into this question. It's a, it's a two-part question. The city has various iterations of climate mitigation plans, including the latest Climate Action 2.0. So question, first part of the question is more general. Are you satisfied with the progress that city government's making toward decarbonization? And it's kind of a yes or no question, really. And then the specific question is, will you support an ordinance to ban further natural gas service hookups in this city? So, Counselor Keating, you want to start us off on that one?
No.
I told you it was a specific question.
Look, I I think Counselor Taylor, my predecessor, put it beautifully when she advocated clearly before leaving office that she is a staunch supporter for no new gas hookups. I think that's a good starting point for anyone who's worked with me in my, you know, advocacy roles with moveon.org or Democracy for America knows that I'm a staunch clean energy jobs champion. If if council is focused on an agreement that aligns with our climate recovery goals and and 2.0, okay, now we can start having that conversation. But it's my aim, as 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 one of eight, to ensure that we get an agreement that looks clearly at how to create clean energy jobs, with that being the fundamental goal, to 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 bring clean energy jobs to our our sector or to our community that are to pay a living wage and also address the and address the 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 need to mitigate our 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 impact on the climate, reduce our addiction to fossil fuels. So I hope that's not a non-answer. I just want to give you my starting point and ultimately my, my willingness to be collaborative with a clean energy lens.
Yes, I I appreciate that. It, this is a, this is a question that's out in the community. Are you for or against a ban on natural gas? It is overly simplistic, but it's a question that people are asking. So that's how it got on the table here. But Counselor Groves?
Well, first of all, I'm still formulating my opinion on this, but I do have some concerns in both directions. I'm all for moving to sustainable energy, which there are components of of gas that are sustainable in that capturing our methane coming off our our solid waste disposal sites, the the methane that we used to flare off at the sewage treatment plant. There's, there's other things that we can do going down this path. At best, I see natural gas, the fossil fuel component is a a bridge fuel, a bridge technology as we continue working towards renewable systems. So part of the thing I want to look at as well is, you know, as especially as we are coming out of the the COVID-19 economic hangover that we have and and the realities of that, I think we need to be very cognizant of what we are doing to our local businesses. You know, as we try to build a model community that's rep, can be replicated in other areas, that's, that's truly where we are going to have the most impact here locally on climate change. And part of this is, we don't want businesses to be moving away. We don't want to lose a lot of what we've gained. So I think this takes a really mindful approach, a really thoughtful approach as we go through it. And I'm looking forward to getting more information right now as we move towards whatever's going to come out of the franchise negotiations with Northwest Natural. But I would like to think beyond what's coming out of the ground right now in natural gas and try and look at how do we move towards renewables, including hydrogen, things like that, where we can actually produce hydrogen when we have low pull on our energy grid for like the electrical system and try to produce things that have low or zero impact. So this is going to be, I think, one of the big issues facing our communities we go forward. The other thing I'll add is I want to make sure that we take into account things like the riverfront development. And depending the decisions we make here, that could dramatically affect what we end up seeing there, which is basically a once in a lifetime opportunity to get this right. And I'm not saying what right is right now because, like I said, I'm still formulating that opinion. But I want to be thoughtful on this. You know, I've got more questions than I have answers at this point. But the decisions that we make in the coming months are going to have ramifications, no matter which way we go on this. And I think it's something that we need to enter into. We're advised to enter into this with with well-thought-out reasons and rationale for where we are trying to go.
Yes, I greatly appreciate both of your comments. This is not a simplistic question and it has been oversimplified in the community in some ways and people have have become polarized over it. But I really appreciate your both acknowledging the interconnectedness with the economics and the businesses and the recovery and that it's not a simple, simple thing that you can jump into without, without really looking at the bigger picture. So thank you about that.
Comment?
Yes, Kitty?
I just want to say, sometimes when you're in in an elected position, you both both know this, you get asked yes or no questions. And and there's not a yes or no answer. But I would suggest in this case that it might be worthwhile to look at a step-down approach that just shows your where you're heading. That is in keeping with what you said, Randy, and is sort of in keeping with allowing the community to know where you want to go, but you may not be able to go all the way there for right now. So just something for you to think, guys, to think about.
Okay.
I appreciate that. And, you know, it's, and you're right, it's, it's not just our businesses, it's our labor pool. It's, it's, everything is affected by the decisions that we're going to be making. So this, this is going to take some, some really good thought. And like I said, we're, we're short on facts right now and 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 long on, a lot of people are emotional and have a strong opinions on both sides of the spectrum.
All right. Well, thank you. We have time for probably one more question. So I'm going to take question from Corin. Corin, go ahead.
Thank you and thank you, Councilors Groves and Keating, for being with us here today for this conversation. You've both mentioned the role that Eugene can have as a as an influence and a leader in our state and across our country or even around our world. And my question is about how you would see us as a leader stepping into an opportunity that has been laid out for the state and for our community with regards to housing. In 2019, the state took the historic step of relegalizing missing middle housing types in on parcels and in areas that previously had only allowed single-family detached homes. This is a long, a long conversation and a long time coming in Eugene and as an as a action to help to increase the diversity of housing and expand the affordability of housing and the supply of housing across our community. While this has been a long time coming and it's been a conversation for some time, it has also had some some fits and starts in terms of how clearly or seriously our community leadership, we're going to grab onto the opportunity presented by this law. So my question for the two of you is if you could say a little bit about how you understand the housing crisis that our community experiences and how you will be leading in the conversation about housing as we move forward with House Bill 2001 and other work.
Scissor, paper, rock, Randy? This is.
I I lost track. Who's up? Who's on first?
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Corin. I I think that's an important question as we go forward. As I said earlier, you know, we have right now a 2.9% rental vacancy rate hovering around 2.93%, which is extremely low as far as a national average. I think we need to be doing everything we can to. I think we need to be doing everything we can to be trying to produce more housing that's affordable. I was very happy to vote in support of 193 more units to be added or the first step in 193 more units being added into our community with a portion of those being supportive housing, but all of them being low-income housing. I think that that's a step in the right direction. Speaking specifically to House Bill, I presume you're talking about 2001 and potentially 2003. You know, the state's taken the politics out of this. I'm still listening to people and I'm trying to understand, you know, what exactly is the holdup? I understand it's changing and we are changing the configuration of our neighborhoods. But at the same time, we need to produce more housing. I mean, our people need this. We're driving people, as I said earlier, out of our area to be relocating in other communities. And we're adding more commute time and more burning of fossil fuels for people to get to work. What I want to try and do is try to take into consideration concerns about livability as much as we can. But at the same time, we don't have a choice not to act on this. You know, the bottom line is if we don't tailor the 2001 to our community, there's a model code that'll be put in place for us and we won't have a choice. I would rather have some say into what we accept as a community and what we put together within the parameters given, rather than having a mandate come down by the state. I love the fact that we are a home rule city, but at the same time, there's another piece that comes with home rule, and that is taking responsibility and acting. And I certainly don't think I will get it right every single time. But one of the things I hope not to do is have the inability of taking action. In my career, the people who can't make decisions, the people that can't take action, they don't last long. We call those foundations because the rest of the house burns down. And you know, this isn't a fire that we're speaking about here, of course. But it is a critical issue for our community. And we've got to help develop places for people to live and where to go while at the same time trying to live within our footprint as much as possible. So I'm ready to go forward and start having the hard discussions and making the decisions.
Karen, thank you for the inquiry. We talked a bit about this earlier off the air, that housing is the elephant in the room. Obviously, you know, COVID relief and recovering from this, the critical health, public health and economic crisis in front of us is paramount. But folks need a place to live. And there's a dearth of affordable housing opportunities throughout our community. The disparity between the haves and the have-nots is stark. And I continue to be a champion and a proponent for building up and not out along our tier-one transportation routes, finding ways to revisit land use code, allow for commercial on the bottom, residential on the way up, that are a mixed economy, affordable units, whether that's one-third subsidized housing, the other two-thirds, you let the market decide, similar to what Counselor Groves alluded to that we just recently passed unanimously just this last week at council. So I look forward to being a champion alongside Counselor Groves and with our stakeholders to advocate fiercely for affordable housing and housing affordability throughout our community and building up and not out to protect our urban growth boundary and build up modestly along West 11th, Sixth and Seventh, Franklin, River Road, Coburg, where there are world-class transportation routes, MX, LTD lines that exist that would reduce our carbon footprint and provide one answer among a great many in regards to championing affordable housing.
Could I just add one piece to this that I think is important that we talked about off-air? I would encourage Matt's and my colleagues to get out and meet with our housing experts. And we have some in the community. I know I met with Karen this last week and I appreciate so much your time and what you helped me with. And there's, you know, I also met with Hayden Holmes. I've met with Cornerstone, Darcy Phillips, and just trying to develop an understanding because it is a complex issue. But I think it is one of the biggest and most challenging and most important issues that are facing our community today. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the question, Karen. And we're coming close to running out of time. So I just want to give our speakers opportunity to do a little wrap-up if they choose one or two minutes. Counselor Groves, if there's anything that you wanted to say in a wrap-up or something brilliant that you haven't said before that you just thought of.
Well, brilliant is a stretch. But first of all, I want to thank the city club for hosting this event. It's important, I think, that people know where we are on the issues. I'm sorry, some of these, we're still formulating where our opinions are and where we want to go with it. But you know, I want to be approachable. I know Counselor Keating feels the same way. It's important that we hear from our constituents because we are representatives. I very much look forward to working with our colleagues. I think we have a very thoughtful council. I also hope to get in there and help start making some decisions and get us on a trajectory, especially as we come out of COVID-19 and the challenges that we are faced with that. But you know, we're not going to get it right every time. But at the same time, you certainly have my commitment to keep coming at it until we get things worked through. And you know, there's going to be new issues coming up tomorrow. It seems like it's almost playing whack-a-mole. You get one problem wrestled down and another one pops up. But you know, the point is, we keep coming at it and we keep working to make this community a better place for all of us. Now, I've lived here for over 40 years now. And most of that, almost all that time has been in west, southwest Eugene. I care about this community deeply. I'm coming out of retirement because I want to serve. I want to continue helping to make this a better place for all of us. And I so much appreciate the voters of Ward A giving me this opportunity. And I appreciate Counselor Chris Pryor and his wife Rosie, who also helped me greatly in this process. So thank you. Thank you for today. And I hope that this is a dialogue that we continue throughout our terms of office.
Thank you.
Similarly, I want to thank City Club and KLCC for broadcasting this conversation today. We've tackled affordable housing, denounced white supremacy, talked climate mitigation, highlighted our budget priorities. We discussed houselessness, Northwest Natural Gas and reducing our carbon footprint, the city's role in addressing the public health crisis. Thank you. Randy and I cannot do this job alone. It takes a village. It takes community input. And I miss the days of being able to go to Hideaway Bakery for a cup of coffee and just having an open conversation and we're going to tsunami books and browsing and coming out of there with a few new Shakespeare plays that I hadn't read before. You know, it's important in this pandemic that we remain accessible and connected, though we cannot necessarily do it in the physical space. My phone number is 541-515-3819, 541-515-3819. If you'd like to just cut through the red tape and have a conversation, constituent or not, reach out and I want to hear what's on your mind. And I look forward to the day when we can come together and have city club conversations in person. And I can go to Mozzie's again and I can go downtown again without wearing a mask. But that day is not necessarily right around the corner. There are challenging, disturbing and dark days ahead if we don't take this public health crisis seriously. So I'm asking everyone within earshot, get vaccinated when you get the chance. Celebrate that vaccine. Share the stories with your friends and family. But also, that's not an immunity silver bullet. We're going to continue wearing our masks in order to promote public safety. So mask up, get that vaccination. And then when we're on the back of this, let's celebrate with great revelry. I look forward to seeing you all in person when we do.
All right. Well, thank you both. This is Sandra Bishop, the coordinator of today's program for the Eugene City Club. And we've had the great honor and pleasure to host our two newest counselors, Counselor Randy Groves and Counselor Matt Keating. So thank you both. We're going to start calling you the dynamic duo if you're not careful. But seriously, you're coming in at a difficult time and you're both born leaders and already achieving a lot of things in a couple of weeks on the council. So thank you for what you're doing now and thank you into the future for representing us. So with that, we will end this program and thank everyone for listening and attending. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This has been our January 22nd, 2021 program, Getting to Know New Eugene City Councilors, Randy Groves and Matt Keating. Before we proceed, I'd like to recognize our Diamond sponsors. Kaiser Permanente exists to provide high-quality, affordable healthcare services and to improve the health of our members and the communities we serve. More information at www.kp.org. Support comes from the University of Oregon. Since 1876, UO has helped Oregonians question critically, think logically, reason effectively, communicate clearly, act creatively and live ethically. More information at uoregon.edu. Peace Health is proud to serve Eugene, Lane County and beyond. As your hometown healthcare partner for more than 80 years, our mission is to keep you and your family healthy. Learn more at peacehealth.org. Lane Community College transforms lives through learning. LCC provides comprehensive, accessible, high-quality educational opportunities that promote student success. For more information, visit lanecc.edu. I would also like to acknowledge our Gold sponsors, Louvache Cobb, Sacred Earth Botanicals and Network Charter School. Before we thank our speakers today, there are a few more quick announcements. Thank you to our in-kind sponsors, KRVM 91.9 Radio, Pack Info and Simplified Computing LLC, Dotson's Photography. And a special thank you to Public Radio Station KLCC 89.7 for airing City Club programs on Mondays at 7:00 PM. Our programs are always available on our YouTube channel and on our Facebook page. Next week, we will have a program focused on the wildfires of the past year. Please join us again on Friday, January 29th for our program, After Holiday Farm, What Does It Mean to Rebuild? We will be joined by County Commissioner Heather Buck, Tim Lau of the Mackenzie Community Development Corporation, and Janine Parisi from the Eugene Water and Electric Board. More details and information about future programs can be found online at the City Club's newly improved website, cityclubofeugene.org. Now, I would like to thank today's speakers, Counselors Randy Groves and Matt Keating. Thanks for a great program and best wishes for a great term. This concludes today's programs. Be well and stay safe.